All right, are we ready to go? Call this meeting to order. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to all our visitors tonight. Item two, roll call.
Clark, Fish, Housman, Parsons, Wakefield, Mayor Beasley.
Here. All right. We have enough to continue. Moving on, approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion from Fish, second from Parsons to approve tonight's agenda. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item number four, the minutes of the July 12 briefing, the July 16 regular council meeting, and the July 30 special meeting. Motion from Parsons, second from Clark to approve the minutes of those three meetings. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item five, we have the claims for August 6th in front of us. A motion from Clark, second from Parsons to approve the claims. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item six, on the consent calendar, we have a plat for Brendan Edition Track Two. I will entertain a motion in a second. Motion from Fish, second from Parsons to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. This is visitors in timed portion of our meeting. First up is the public hearing, the first reading of ordinance number 566. It's revisions to chapter 15 of the zoning ordinance. Questions or discussion on that?
This has been reviewed many times by P&amp;Z and comes with their blessing.
So is that a motion to accept?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a motion from Fish, second from Clark to accept the first reading of ordinance 566 revisions to the zoning ordinance in chapter 15. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right, the next one.
Mayor, may I, please?
Certainly.
So, I just want you to know, and Chuck sits on planning and zoning, but that that is a volunteer group and they have spent numerous, numerous hours on our building codes and they, every few years they go back and review them just to make sure that we're in compliance and doing the best for our citizens. So, if you ever have an opportunity to thank those folks, please do because it's a really thankless job and it can be really tedious. So Chuck, I want to thank you for cheering that group.
Yes, well put. The next item we have is the Pink Ladies 5K Run Walk, and I thought I saw someone walk in here to talk about it, but it must have disappeared.
They are proposing a walk-run up in the industrial park, starting at the intersection of Railroad Avenue and Chestnut on October 27, starting at 2 o'clock.
I would make a motion to approve, Mayor.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Fish, second from Wakefield to approve the Pink Ladies 5K Run Walk. Questions or discussion?
So are they looking for road closures?
We'll assist and make sure that the roads are safe for them to conduct their activity. It's on a Saturday.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Anyone else wishing to address the council? That's not on the agenda. You have five minutes if you'd like to take it. Yes, please step up.
620 Lakota Avenue. And I see that it's going to be on the gin and next, but I just wanted to let you know my feelings. I have a concern and complaint about the golf course. We had a wedding there, wedding reception on July 14th. And for my daughter, it was a beautiful day. It wasn't too hot for July. I think the high was probably 85. And the air conditioning could not keep up. It was so hot and uncomfortable. People kept going outside and it was too hot to dance. And people were leaving early. It's not what you want when you spend thousands of dollars on a wedding and you have people coming from all over the United States and so it was kind of disappointing. And we had, like I said, the high was probably 85 for July. You could expect 90, 95. And have 300 people in there. We had probably 240, 250 people. Carrie tried to hard us. She said, "We've brought this before to the council and things just don't seem to get, it doesn't seem to get fixed." So, I'm just letting you know, we've had two weddings there. My husband's a member. We love the venue. It would just be nice to have the air conditioning be able to keep up. I don't know what the problem is, but I'm sure you guys can find out. We had one other concern with air conditioner, not air conditioner, the golf course. We spent several weeks trying to figure out the circuits. My daughter wanted ice cream. That was her deal. She wanted ice cream. They needed a dedicated 20 amps. The DJ needed dedicated 15 amps. And my son and my husband, we spent weeks, really months trying to figure out the circuitry and couldn't figure it out. We had, we have two friends that are licensed contractors came out. They looked at the fuse box. They're not labeled. I don't know how. It says breaker one, breaker two, or whatever. It's not labeled what goes to the kitchen, what goes. We didn't want to blow up the DJ's, you know, expensive equipment. We didn't want the ice cream machine to fail. We brought a generator over from Parker and hauled it out just in case to back it up. We lucked out and picked the right fuse and everything worked fine, but it really, at least things should be marked so you can tell where to plug things in. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, we'll move on to item eight, golf course. We have a request for removal of some buildings.
Yeah, we are coming before you to ask if now that number one is down on the bottom of the hill, we would like to actually get rid of the concession building that is there now. It, we've actually had a major leak in there, so we've actually closed it since spring. And we really haven't had any issues whatsoever since then, you know, as far as people complaining that there's no bathroom down there. So, we're asking if we can just remove it.
Are you guys going to do the work yourself?
Yes. Yes, and we're going to get, I just visited with Raleigh, maybe if we could, if we separate the, you know, shingles and wood and all that, haul it away with dump trucks and.
Kelly and I have talked about this. I'm very supportive of their effort to do this, you know, not only is the building an eyesore, but I just, you know, to reopen it, I think would cost more than it's worth to keep it there. And I think there can be other plans in the future that Kelly's talked about to make that area more usable.
I get an invite to demo day, right?
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
That'd be tomorrow about 6:00 if this gets approved.
Do we need a motion on this or a motion?
I would make a motion to go ahead and authorize.
I would make a motion to go ahead and authorize Kelly and his helpers, and if that includes Tim, that's great, to go ahead and demolish the building by number one T.
And I will second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Motion from Parsons, second from Wakefield to approve the demolition of the old concession building next to hole number one. Questions or discussion?
Did we decide you want the antenna?
No, I don't want the antenna. I don't need a lightning rod on my house. With all that said, I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you guys. All right, item B. As we heard, our air conditioner is very finicky on the warm days, so we better figure out what we're doing.
I had Cryer and Blaine come out last Thursday. Because we do have issues, obviously. Feel bad about the past wedding we had. It's just unfortunately, when there's 250 people in there and it's hot, the doors constantly open. It's just almost impossible to keep up our units. So, we had Cryer and Blaine come out and they suggested three small units that we can put out throughout the upper level of the clubhouse. And also, they call them air curtains, that you put above the door so it blows air in both directions, so it keeps the hot air out and the cold air in. So, so I'm still waiting on the bid for that yet, but hopefully this week we'll be getting it.
Is it something like we could get in, I mean, pretty quickly?
I think so, yeah.
So they call that, is it a mini split unit?
I think so, yeah.
Where there's the little condenser outside and it looks like a hotel on the inside kind of thing, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing is, is there's a little drain that goes out for the condensation, so.
Yeah, and those work really well. As long as they're going to be giving you an estimate, I think, could they also take care of mark from those fuse boxes?
Right, that's part of the, because we're not even sure if we have enough capacity for that, so they're already contacting electrician to include that in the bid. So, that should take care of our, our, you know, breaker situation.
I would just add one more thing, Peggy. We had had trouble getting people to come out and even look at our units to give us some estimates, so that was part of the delay, so apologize for that.
All right, so as you get that bid, let's get moving on it. Right. Purchase proposal for a four-inch trash pump?
All right. We've been, obviously, the four-inch trash pump that's in the river now is done for. We're actually renting one right now. But I guess our our hangup about getting a new one of those is the noise for the citizens across the river. So I've been in contact with with my irrigation guys about trying to figure out some electric sort of deal. We got a bid to bring some big power over to the river. Have it disconnect at our pump house. Bring big power over so we can run electric pumps, so it's virtually silent. He's getting back to me. He, he didn't think it would have to be near as big as what we thought maybe it was going to have to be. So maybe we'll, you know, we don't have a definite number yet. But with your recommendation, we'll just, we're actually renting the same pump that we've been, that we had in the river until I really get solid numbers. If you guys are okay with us just renting, then we'll just rent until we're ready.
And the cost of that rent was?
It's, well, it's like 665 or something a month, two something a week.
Okay.
So, 227 or something a week.
When do you normally turn off your irrigation?
We turn it off November 1st.
Okay, so we got. We got a few more months then of irrigation.
I would go ahead and make the motion that we allow Kelly to go ahead and continue renting and explore this electricity option, so we can begin looking at that and see what we want to do.
Motion from Parsons, second from Fish to continue renting the pump with the proposal of seeing other options.
So discussion wise, you said it's about 200 bucks a week right now? Right, to rent it?
Correct, yes.
So to purchase one's $2,300, $2,400.
Yep, yep, that was, yeah, it's, they're about just shy of $2,600.
Yeah, so we've got, call it 10 weeks worth of usage and we've bought one, so.
Correct.
In this case, would we be better off, because we're going to have more than 10 weeks left of renting, right?
Yes.
So I'm just, it's, this pump is something that we can use to move water off the golf course, should we ever need to do that again, four years from now?
And the one that was in there, we, it lasted us two and a half seasons.
Yeah, and if you're only using it intermittently, it's going to last you a lot longer. I just, I get kind of nervous about spending that kind of money. I mean, you're going to spend probably three, four grand on rent by the time the end of the year comes, right? What are we at, August? So we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. Yeah, you've got 13, 14 months, weeks, so.
So you have three months.
It's a horse apiece. Either we rent it and we don't own it, or we spend the money and we own it. So, I mean, it's kind of up to the council, I guess, but. So in light of that, Tim, I mean, if you can use it for other things, I would be supportive of just going ahead and and buying it. My question is, can we do something to it to minimize that noise for the complaints that we've got?
Well, what, what we did was build big foam panels around it.
Okay.
You know, we haven't talked to the neighbor about it, you know. But if it helped at all or not, but we built three panels around so the sound would come out towards the golf course instead of across to the, to the neighbors. So, and if we have to, we're going to build like a 45-degree angle roof on it. Problem is, if we get it too enclosed, then it's going to overheat and then we're going to have big troubles.
I would go ahead, based on Tim's comments, to go ahead and amend my motion to just go ahead and purchase it.
I've amended motion from from Parsons and Barbie. You okay with that? Second, okay. All right. With that being said, is there any other questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Tractor and an aerifier, aerator.
Well, our tractor, as you guys know, is a, is a little Kubota, 1993. We, we currently own a small, little pull behind aerator. It's a, just a ground-driven old guy. That really doesn't make a proper aerifying hole. And we're just, with the issues we had all summer with Mother Nature being not so kind, we're really in need of a, a new aerifier that we can get the job done quicker and more efficient and a, and a better product when we're done.
So what now could you be doing if we had the equipment?
Well, we would be out, you know, punching holes, you know. Basically, at the start of the year, we put out a pre-emergent, which, you know, everybody puts in the yard for crabgrass and any grassy weeds to not come up in your yard. And so we put that down also, so we don't get it. And what happens is at the end of, you know, mid-September, eventually that wears off and then the polyanua and all that starts coming back. And if you disturb the ground, you know, like golf clubs take divots out and stuff like that, there comes weeds and stuff through that. So if we punch all these holes, then the grass comes back faster.
And so will it assist us in our flooding damages?
It, it will definitely help us, yeah. We can get in there kind of right as soon as it dries up, you know, go punch it open, you know, get air down in the ground again, because the silt is, you know, it acts just like concrete. It just smothers everything and kills the grass, like the front of 10 Fairway.
And if you're able to aerate now, would you then go ahead and overseed or?
I, yeah, we would, you know, the Parks Department bought a cedar. And so I would beg Devon if I could borrow that. And, and with your guys' approval, we would do some seeding too.
And the tractor that you're proposing to get, that's not a duplication of anything that we have already? I'm not aware.
No, no, the, it's a, you know, we have a tractor right now.
But I mean, with the Parks Department, do they have anything or, I'm not aware?
They have a tractor, yes.
But I'm not aware if that's something that can be used or we could utilize this too, or anybody speak to that? I think we talked about horsepower being a concern with theirs, right? This one is a 52 horse.
This one's 52 at the PTO.
So, I mean, it's.
We have a 45 horsepower tractor that drags the whole fields, and then we have 65 that hauls. The 65's only most every day, so that one's not
Sure.
going to be available very much. The 45 would be, but it's a little undersized.
And to be clear, what everyone sees on the screen is two different options, and we're not buying both tractors. We'd be buying the one 52 horse, right?
Yep, yeah, the 32 eight.
Yep, and then I guess the other, you know, thought that I wanted to talk about is typically we do aerate the greens only every year, is that correct?
Correct.
And we pay to rent that out?
We do, yes.
And so we can only get the greens right now, because that's really, I mean, to do the whole golf course would be pretty darn expensive, right?
Yes, very.
So, the whole point of this is?
It would be probably half of the cost of the aerifier we're going to buy.
So the, the whole point of this is we can aerify the entire course, right?
We will, yes, we will aerify the entire golf course.
Rough and fairways.
There will be, there will be times, you know, we can use this aerifier to, to do greens also, except it doesn't do the big deep time, you know, which we want to do, so that we can get that, you know, the, the holes down at that 8, 10 inches, where this only does that 5 inch.
So to look at all our options, did we check into through these places? Do they have financing available or?
I've not heard back from Toro, but John Deere has 0% for 60 months. Or we can take $1,000 off the cost if we're just going to pay cash, or if we have our own financing. 0% is hard to beat.
Yes.
Just to go back to the tractor for, for a moment, one of the options on here is the 40 PTO. And I guess I'm just curious why it's on here if it's not sufficient horsepower?
Well, he wanted to give us two different, you know, and show the difference of what, you know, because the Toro only, only requires 35 at the PTO. But the aerator, I believe, is, is, you know, that 40 plus. Because it's a big machine and.
So just, does it go back to the one that the Park Department has that's 45? I mean, would that be a possibility? If it's only, how many times a year would you be using it?
Well, we would use it for about two months straight. It takes a long time to aerify.
Like daily or?
Yep, yep.
I guess based on what Kelly's told me, Dana, I'd rather go with that 52, just to make sure that we have sufficient horsepower to run that thing.
You know, and they say that the difference between the cost and the, the quality or the the horsepower and size of tractor you get are, is way better for the, what, 3,000 bucks?
And that has turf tires on it, optioned exactly the way?
It's got the big boys, yep, the big, like flotation type tire.
So I'm certainly comfortable taking that second option there on the tractor, take advantage of the financing and and on that Toro, I'm certainly for that. I'd like to see if there's some financing available, so we don't have to chew cash, but I guess I'd like if everybody's comfortable. I guess I'll go ahead and make the motion that we go ahead and take advantage of the financing on the John Deere and authorize, I don't know who has to sign that, Ryan, you or?
I was just going to add, I am checking into the local bank too, and I haven't heard back from them on financing, so I don't know what percentage at this point. So we can finance both of them. I know you can't really beat the John Deere at 0% either, so.
I would agree on that one. It's tough to beat 0, but anyway, I, I would make the motion to purchase that second option there, that John Deere with the 52 PTO, and then check into financing and authorize whatever official's going to do that, whether it's financing with the local banks or with John Deere. And then makes the, and have the motion to include the aerator and do some type of financing on that, whether it's local or if they offer something, maybe they're offering 0 too, so.
Yeah, I know right now they have no pay till May. You know, so we can get it and then we won't owe anything till May.
I guess I'd make that part of my motion too. So, because if we get this now, you can begin using it like right now.
Yeah, as soon as we get everything.
Unfortunately, it doesn't matter if you pay for it now or later, it still goes on the books this year for financing and accounting purposes.
That's fine.
Oh, picky, picky, picky.
And just to clarify on the pricing of the aerator, we get the contract price, not the list price? Is that what we're going for? Okay.
Yes, I did.
I did.
I have a motion from Parsons, second from Fish, to approve the purchase of a tractor and an aerator with the looking into financing and using the financing available. Correct?
Correct.
Any questions or discussion?
I want to thank you guys for really kind of looking and digging into this. It's, these are great opportunities for us as a community to, to be financially prudent and, and, you know, it, it looks like it's a pretty big expense, but the cost that it's going to save us and, and you know, help us, you know, keep our golf course where it belongs in quality. It's a tool that you need in your toolbox and, you know, taking the time to explain that to us and do everything you can to make sure that it, it financially makes sense. It's, it's important and it helps us make our decisions. So, thank you guys.
Thanks, thank you. With that being said, I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right. Item E on the golf course, we have someone that needs to start work.
Yeah, we're starting to lose some of our helps, so we'd like to hire a card attendant, Aiden Carson.
Can I make a motion to approve?
A motion from Parsons, second from Wakefield to approve the hire of Aiden Carson to be a cartech. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Anything else? Golf course? All right.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item nine, we have the police report in front of us. Okay. We have the fire department. I saw quite a few of them walk in. We have a request from them.
Request for their first half payment for operations and maintenance and capital. The auditor, the accountant's report is included in your packet from Quam and Burgland.
Do I have any questions for?
I'll make that motion to approve, Mayor.
A motion from Fish, second from Clark to approve the request for their funding. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right. Thanks, guys, for showing up. Yes. We have our inspection report also. And we have a promotion. Must be important. Mrs. Else is here.
Puts more pressure on you guys.
Yep.
We've had this under discussion probably since April. Talking about creating the position of lieutenant and promoting Sergeant Else to that position. We've completed the job description for that position, and I am asking for that to go ahead. He would be raised from line 47, which is 3701, to line Um, he would be raised from line forty-seven, which is thirty-seven oh one, to line forty-nine, which is thirty-eight oh nine. Uh, Wade has been with the city, started part-time back in nineteen ninety-one, uh, went to full-time in nineteen ninety-three, twenty-five years ago. Uh, he was promoted to sergeant in oh-three. Uh, in his current position, he's working as a daytime sergeant, and he does, uh, payroll, which we appreciate, scheduling, uh, for all the members of the department, uh, monitors the training, uh, does a variety of vehicle maintenance and assessment, he, uh, stepped up, uh, a couple of years ago and took on the new software project for the city, and that turned into a fairly massive, uh, commitment on his part. He came to work, he piled through it, and it was, I, I can't say as it would be real exciting work to do, and, uh, but he did it, and we are where we are at with that project today because of his diligence. And that, so, with that, I, I would ask for this position to be approved, we're not going to promote another sergeant, you know, so we're not increasing the size of the department, we're not increasing the size of the, of the supervisory staff.
This would give you a clear-cut second in command in case you're, of your absence, correct?
In my absence or my incapacity.
Yes.
Which we don't like to talk about.
Well, we weren't talking about that, no, like, sometimes when you're gone, this would give you a.
Yes.
I will make a motion that we promote Sergeant Else to Lieutenant Else.
A motion from Clark, second from Fish, to approve the promotion of Sergeant Else to Lieutenant Else. Questions or discussion? That being said, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, there lieutenant. Your first duty is to figure out this fireworks.
Yeah, he's gonna, he's gonna be sticking around for this president, or for this, uh, discussion tonight. Um, uh, in recognition of that, I, I didn't, I wasn't so bold that I went out and I ordered a, uh, new badge for him, our badge is say chief, sergeant, or officer, but I did, uh, get some bars here that I will present him with. There you go. Takes me back to a MASH, uh, MASH episode. I guess until we get that new badge, we're gonna have to call him a lieutenant sergeant.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
I thought you were gonna talk about Corporal Klinger or something. Congratulations, there Mr. Else. Fireworks.
I asked for this to be on the agenda so we could continue the conversation, I know we had, I can't say we, um, last year there was good intent to have a conversation before the year approached, or the season approached, and, and time just got away and it didn't happen. Mr. Erby is here again this evening, and I thank him for coming, I was, I was really compelled after he spoke, as well as Debbie Lund, uh, of their frustrations, and I've heard a lot of other citizens speak of similar frustrations, I've heard comments uh, to the effect that it's just a matter of time before somebody gets hurt or a house burns down, and I have the same concern. Uh, we're really talking about dangerous pyrotechnics, and each year it seems like those pyrotechnics get larger and larger and louder and louder and go higher and higher. Uh, I have an insurance agency, I have a lot of, of customers that are constantly concerned, uh, how their property's going to be protected, we get a lot of hypothetical questions about what happens if this occurs, or this person's hurt, or this property is damaged, uh, there is a lot of concern out there. There's a lot of people that are also negatively and directly affected by these fireworks, and we, we heard some of that a couple of weeks ago, um, but just a short little list, you know, we have veterans, migraine sufferers, people with anxiety disorders, people with small children, people with pets, infants, people have to work early in the morning, people with sensitive hearing, even people with high blood pressure. The list goes on and on. Are fireworks fun? Absolutely, they're blast, but they're not safe. I know we pride ourselves in Brandon of being the safest city in South Dakota, and I know that relates to crime, but I would really like to see us take it further and be safe, and that would include how we handle the pyrotechnics. I do want to point out that there are injuries happening, I know that, I've watched some past videos that address this topic, and there may not be a lot of police incidents that get reported, uh, towards the injuries, but they are happening, a lot of people have injuries and don't necessarily call the police if they burn their hand. I spoke to the fire chief today, and I found out that they actually have a Fourth of July gathering at the fire department to make sure that they're they're present with enough bodies to go and respond to these types of, of calls. The fact that our community went from just a couple of complaint calls the prior year to fifty this year, I think is huge, I think it takes a lot for most people to actually pick up the phone and call the police. I realize Sioux Falls had a lot as well, but in comparison by population, we had almost two times the complaints that Sioux Falls did per capita, and I think that speaks volumes about how our residents are feeling about this. So, I propose that we consider safety first, safety before fun. I think we have an obligation to consider all the negative effects that are happening to our residents that don't enjoy fireworks, and I feel we have a responsibility to all residents that live here twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, not three hundred and fifty-eight, or however many days it ended up being. So, I would like this council to have discussion, and, uh, I, I would be, um, fine, sticking with the same dates, but going with safer fireworks, the kinds that are not high-risk to children, uh, pets, neighbors, et cetera.
I would echo what Dana had said, I would like us to consider just, uh, the Fourth of July.
As a veteran, um, I know all too well what fireworks do to our fellow veterans, um, I've had several of them reach out to me, uh, and I know that it's a very challenging uh, day, uh, or days, uh, for them. Um, I have a personal story, and, and I don't mind sharing it, uh, I struggle with it. Um, I was in my garage, uh, working on my hot rod, which is one of my favorite things to do, and the neighbor decided it was time to light off fireworks, and she was in the legal time, actually, she was on the Fourth of July during the day, and, uh, the fireworks going off were so loud, and, uh, it completely ruined my day, I had to basically seek shelter in my own home, and yes, I was in my garage, I was safe, the garage door was open and the, and the noise was there, but it's uncomfortable, and I know that it impacts many other veterans and, and, and animals and, and so forth, so, um, you know, the fireworks are getting bigger, they're getting louder, um, you know, I've spent some time talking to, to TJ about some of the classes and, and the different settings, or whatever you want to call it for Class C versus this or that, and, and the definition is the hard part for me. Um, what do we di-, what do we determine as safe, what do we determine as too big, too small? Um, and, and what, what's the easiest to enforce? Um, so that's one thing that, you know, talking with some of the police staff, enforcement is the key, something that we can enforce, and, um, you know, the word got out very quickly this year that they're handing out fines, um, it didn't take long at all, social media was pretty powerful and, and it spread like wildfire that I got a hundred dollar fine, and oh, I got a hundred dollar fine, and, and that's great. But the trick is, is if they're lighting off fireworks, our law enforcement has to see them light it off. Um, and, we're, we're giving a lot, uh, to the residents when it comes to the dates and the times, and the situation's always going to come up every year, where what day does the Fourth of July fall on? If it falls in the middle of the week, that's one thing, but if it falls, uh, if it falls on the, in the weekend, that's great, then everybody can have their fun on the weekend, but when it falls on the middle of the week like it did this year, it's just, it's tough, and I get that, uh, for residents, and, and, um, based on the feedback that I've received from residents, several of them have reached out and have asked that I support no fireworks at all in the city of Brandon, uh, similar to the way that Sioux Falls does, so to make our ordinance mimic what Sioux Falls has, and that's what was recussed in.
Anybody else?
TJ Cameron, twenty-four seventeen, East Lopez Lane, owner of Brandon Fireworks. Um, overall, first, I want to make sure that everybody is completely clear that I one hundred percent am an overall supporter of a more strict regulation of what fireworks are shot in town. That said, there's a couple of comments that I would like to provide a little clarity from my opinion on. Um, you know, fireworks are only as safe as the environment, I can't say that, you know, anything you do is one hundred percent safe, but there can be safer ways to light fireworks, but I don't think it is safe to light large artillery shells, things that shoot far into the air in a driveway, when if a customer of mine comes into my store, I recommend that they're at least a hundred and fifty feet away. State law requires that you're a hundred and fifty feet away from a fireworks store in order to discharge fireworks, so that could be something to consider. Um, as far as only the Fourth of July, uh, I think if we regulated more of what is allowed, um, I think there should be consideration that actually a lot of people work on the Fifth. So, I think the Third, the evening of the Third, was probably better suited, whether it be, whether, whether council decides to go with large fireworks or decides to regulate them to smaller fireworks, that a lot of people have the Fourth of July off, so, um, the evening of the Third might, you know, I don't, I don't know that necessarily it's the day, I think it's the type of fireworks that we're lighting, in my opinion, uh, because if we regulated it to novelty items that are able to be sold year-round without a fireworks license, things like snappers, little fountains that go less than a few feet on the air, you know, um, little things where you pull the string, I think that's pretty typical to see in a municipality, um, and I would, you know, as a business owner of fireworks, you know, I'm still a supporter of that, but, um, I don't know that just the Fourth of July only, unless the council's saying, well, we still want to continue to, you know, shoot these big things in the, in the middle of the city, I guess that's, that's up to the council. Um, but also, one other thing, you know, again, as an overall supporter of a little bit stricter regulation, the negatively impacted, um, there are also things that I think we should rec-, you know, consider, that there's also people that are very positively impacted. Um, with the celebration of what the Fourth of July is for, and our independence, and, you know, our service members that, you know, fought for that freedom and that we celebrate that every single year, you know, it's a really important holiday to me personally, so, um, I do know that there are very some people that are very negatively impacted, but there's also some people that are very positively impacted by the celebration. Um, again, not necessarily supporting the large fireworks in the city limits, but there is some positive to fireworks as well, so. I would be happy to work with the council, and I've stated this before, um, helping define, uh, the difference between, you know, what should be able to be shot in town and what shouldn't be, but there's a lot of other cities that you can model the ordinance off of, um, which I think we've alluded to before, that, you know, would match something we could do here in Brandon. Any questions I can answer for anybody?
Well, I, I would agree with TJ that the size is part of the issue, I would, would hate to see us banning them totally. I'm also in favor of the night before and the day of, if we can get some regulation. But my overall concern is, again, how do we police it, I don't know that it makes any difference if we ban them, or we only do the Third and the Fourth, we're still going to have an enforcement issue, so until we can get that figured out with our police uh, force, you know, we're still going to have the problem.
I thi- I think the enforcement comes down to, like, like Chief Dave was saying on, on Thursday, um, we make it known to the officers there's zero tolerance, we plan in advance, we use some of Mr. Erby's ideas to get the word out, um, you know, heck, we can have these signs that we have out now for, for water on the edge of town, just for a couple of days, you know, no fireworks in town, or whatever we end up deciding on. Uh, I think we can develop a reputation rather than people from other communities come to Brandon and let their fireworks off, that, that they do the opposite, they go find some, someplace else to let them off, because it's not tolerated here. And it might take a couple of years, it might take some, some work, but this is definitely the time to start and to get the process rolling, get the word out, and give Chief Dave and, and Lieutenant Else time to line up the workforce and the officers to line up their vacations around this, because we'll probably need more people. But I, I think it's, I think we owe it to the, to the community to try to have as safe of an environment as we possibly can, and I know TJ's mentioned before when he stood at the podium, uh, putting on a show, I'd rather see us support a show, if people want the big fireworks to ooh and ah over, I, you know, I can appreciate that too, I spent my childhood watching the fireworks on West Lake Okoboji, and it was, it was a blast, but I, I think that there's, there's, um, work that needs to be done on our ordinance as it is now. TJ, while you're here, I mean, just for a quick education on the different classes, so you said novelty, does that include like the snakes and the sparklers, or to what point does it break into the next class?
Um, pretty much anything with a fuse, um, so, you know, the pole strings, I think a minute ago I said fountains, but those technically have a fuse. So, I guess that would be up to interpretation by the city, but, you know, what you could go and buy at Walmart or Menards is generally what's accepted as novelty, that you could sh- you can shoot outside of typically being regulated by a city, but it's pole string, confettis, um, snappers, things that don't necessarily have a fuse. Um, and then you get into the, you know, commonly called Class C, which are everything that you can buy as a, um, consumer, you know, between the twenty-seventh of June and the Sunday, or, and the Fifth of July in South Dakota, and then, um, Class B, commonly known as, it's one-point-three G, but commonly known as Class B is what you'd have to buy and store in like underground facilities or bunkers and that are regulated by the ATF. And I would, um, be happy to, you know, this, the show that I did was just kind of impromptu this year, and there was clearly a huge demand, I only posted it on uh, Facebook sometime around like the thirtieth of June, maybe, maybe July first, and it was unbelievable attendance and, you know, over fifteen hundred people on Facebook saying they were interested, so there was clearly a huge demand for it, and, and I, you know, as a business owner, you know, love fireworks, and it was something that promotes my business too, so, I'm more than willing to continue to do that, but I'd be happy to collaborate with the city on, you know, saying, hey, we, you know, we have somebody that will do a public display of the larger items, so please follow our, you know, ordinance and restrictions outside of those times to the things that are allowed in the city limits, and I'd be happy to help co-promote that in some way too.
So, when I was on the fire department, uh, both in Elkton and Harrisburg, it was always done as a fundraiser, so basically, whatever money was raised by the fire department went right back into fireworks for the next year. Um, this year was, was pretty fortunate that we had a business willing to donate a show for the residents, uh, and I know a lot of people that did partake in that, um, I could see them from my deck, which was far enough away from me, um, but, you know, it's something that I think that as we talk about fireworks, I know it's not under really the ordinance, but I think it's a method in which that we could, you know, promote safe fireworks use, um, and the residents could still get some enjoyment out of fireworks, so. Let's not forget to leverage that piece of a city-sponsored or fire department-sponsored, and if the fire department makes some money fundraising, so be it, I think that's fair enough too, so. Let's work together as a team and come up with something.
I'd love to see the fire department, you know, raise money off it, I, I'm not asking by any means whatsoever for any kind of funding, but, um, it was a little bit too late this season to plan, I had tried to contact the fire department, but it was, it was, you know, only a few days before, I'm sure they had a lot of things on their plate, but hoping to try to partner with them on a fundraiser for their behalf, um, to donate fireworks, and then they could sell raffle tickets or something to, to raise money for the fire department, not for me, but for the fire department or something, and I ended up partnering with some other nonprofits to do that, um, but that's something that, you know, we could talk about further in advance for next year.
So, Ma- Mayor Dana seems to have a real interest in this particular area, is it possible to like have some sort of a subcommittee put together to, to work on it, it's really hard for the whole council to work on it, there's just too many of us.
I think that's a possibility.
I think we're all in agreement that the large fireworks are not what we want to see in our community, I mean, can we just start there?
Yes.
Perhaps with an ordinance to go back to the, the smaller, safer version of an ordinance, I mean, I don't want to make it more complicated than it needs to be.
She says wrinkle on her forehead here, so, um, you know, the, the kind of the thought is, is what, maybe we need to start with some just simple research about, you know, is it limited by ten feet in the air, is it, you know, what's the definition of big fireworks, I don't know what's out there for current ordinances in other communities on how they limit big versus small. Um, fuse versus no fuse is pretty simple, but, again, how's a new lieutenant gonna be driving around seeing if it has a fuse or not, so, something that's enforceable i- is the key. By drive-by.
Yeah, and, and I wasn't trying to wrinkle my forehead, so sorry, I, no, it was just, I don't mind drafting something, I just need to know what you want me to look for, so if it's, you want me to try and find something that doesn't allow things to go up more than twenty feet, if, because I'm kind of hearing a few different things, and so I can, I can find some other ordinances or even um, work on trying to get some different definitions, but the layperson's not going to know what a-
but the layperson's not going to know what a Class C firework is.
Yeah.
So what I'm kind of hearing from you is, we, we don't, we might be okay with having fireworks during certain times, and, and that'll be easy enough for you to regulate and tell me, it's just not having the ones that are going up 15 feet, 20 feet. So let me, let me look into it a little bit. There are probably some out there, someplace in the 10 states that allow you to do it.
So a question I have for Tim, and I'm, I'm, I'm not familiar, what's the Sioux Falls ordinance?
You're not supposed to do it. You get, yeah, you get snaps, you get sparklers, you get smokeballs, snakes, yeah, yeah, a fountain.
I believe that is 100% correct, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, now, smokeballs do have a fuse, but there's some definitions that, that categorize it, but I, there's a legally federally defined definition of what is a novelty and what's not, so that's something we could definitely reference. And I just happened to lean over and ask Mr. Erby if, if he would maybe be willing to work together with Dana or something, and myself, and I'd be willing to volunteer for any kind of definitions or help, and he said he'd be happy to assist too, because I know it's something that affected him personally, and, you know, we'd be happy to share our thoughts or help.
And I would ask anybody in the audience, if you have opinions about whether it's one day, two days, or three days to pass that on to Dana, I'm curious to know about.
Yes. All right, thank you. Yes, and we will continue to move forward. Yes, yes, Mr. Erby.
Jim Erby, 905 Maywood Street. My position is kind of in between everybody else's. As far as I'm concerned, we could pass any ordinance that we want to pass, but if the public isn't aware of what the ordinance is, the chief will tell you, when we were joking last meeting about, don't speed in Brandon, the public knows that, so they don't speed in Brandon. We've got laws that say you can't drive drunk, and people do. We've got laws that say you can't speed, and people do. We've got laws that say you can't do all kinds of things, and people still do it. So I think the core of the issue, as far as I'm personally concerned, isn't what we say is legal and what we say isn't, as much as when we say it's illegal, and what we do to attempt to enforce a very difficult thing to enforce. I know in my personal case, my issue started almost a week before the 4th of July. If I knew with reasonable certitude that I had to worry about my animals starting at 10 o'clock on July 3rd and lasting until 11 o'clock on July 4th, I could prepare for that if it was a big deal to me. I'd leave town, I could do whatever I wanted to do. Tim, as much as this impacts him, and with all deference to TJ, as patriotic as I believe you are by having served in the military, had you, you said it was within the legal timeframe, but I know in a lot of cases, people just simply did not expect the barrage that they got this year. I know in my written proposal to you guys, and when we were talking last time, everybody said, well, each of these individual tools that I had suggested is probably ineffective, that we only have 600 people that get the tweets, and so on and so forth, but they're all more effective than doing nothing. That's thing number one. So again, my, my dog in this fight, pardon the pun, isn't so much the what, it's the when and making the public aware of it. So I've proposed, and you guys all have copies of this, and, and one observation I'd like to make too, the Sioux Falls ordinance is pretty specific as far as nothing of any significance allowed, yet they still had 500 complaints. So I'm not delirious enough to believe that any ordinance that we pass is suddenly we snap our fingers and the problem is solved. But we do know from the 50 or so complaints that we got this year, we know 50 or so places to station the chief's folks next year to kind of be able to get ahead of, of the curve. And I'm not standing up here, believe me, trying to tell anybody how to do their job, but it seems to me that a very good tool to use would be to set up a public hotline that says, you know, if you have a fireworks complaint, don't call the dispatch who has to get it out, call this phone number. And that phone number, and I'm pulling things out of the air, but could go to the cell phone of an officer who's on patrol, and all he has to do is get on his radio and say fireworks at so-and-so address, and they're on their way. To me, that, some version of that is reasonable. We talked, and I think Tim at last meeting somewhat chastised me in a joking way, because I didn't complain to the police, even though I was one of the people who was most vocal about it, and I didn't for all the reasons that we've talked about, the, the difficulty of enforcing. So I think one of the things that we need to publicize is, we encourage you. If you have an issue in your neighborhood, do this, call whatever it is, but please do it because that's necessary for the enforcement. We talked before about inserts in the water bills, that maybe they, nobody reads them, I don't know. I read the one that I got about the survey, and complied with that. So again, it may not be the greatest solution, but it's better than doing nothing. The roadside signs that Dana was talking about, we just put them up saying we're going to pave over the railroad tracks, and I saw one the other day, and it looked like in somebody's yard, way down towards Sioux Falls about the lawn watering regulations. The chief has also al- already said he would be more than willing to go on local radio and television, do a bagpipe solo, and follow that up with some discussion about how Brandon is going to enforce the regulations. TJ mentioned at the last meeting that he had been provided with some handouts, that he was comfortable handing out to his customers. So I believe there are things that we could do. I was looking today, we have a Twitter account that we've had for 10 years and have never sent out a tweet, and we have 63 followers for some reason, and I'm one of them. So, you know, that's just another tool. So my position, and I would, again, to follow up on what TJ said, I would be more than happy to man the hotline, if that's what it takes. I would be willing to volunteer in just about any capacity that I could to bring us to something that is enforceable, and then go ahead and try to enforce it. So.
Thanks, Jim, thank you. All right.
So will this stay on the agenda?
I believe it needs to, we need to.
I don't want to lose track of it, even though we form a subcommittee, but I guess I'd like to stay on the agenda, even if we don't have an update next time.
And Mrs. Clark, you're willing to take that on? All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on, park and rec. We have a maintenance report?
Yes, you, we have the maintenance report in the kit, in the packet, and I'd just like to report on what happened at our last meeting. We had a lot of visitors at our last meeting, so that was fun. We had a resident that came in and was talking to us about trail connectivity, which is something that we've worked on in the past years through our budget process, we're continuing to work on that. We had two young gentlemen, aged 12, that came in with a full-scale presentation about creating a dog park out at Tallgrass. They had a Lego design, and it, it was quite impressive. So we're taking that under advisement. Generally, when people come in, we take down the information, it's not anything that we deal with at that point, but then it comes back on the agenda, and so we will continue to see how that plays out. We had the hockey folks in, and they have gone from nine hockey players in 2011 to they anticipate 155 kids this year. And so they are interested in building an indoor hockey rink, they have the outdoor one, but even though it's refrigerated, they still had trouble with the weather trying to maintain that ice. And so they were in discussing their process. We do have a memorandum of understanding with the Hockey Association, and that is that we are committed to providing the land for them, a gravel parking lot, and hooking up the utilities. And that's about 55,000 for the utilities, the other two things we already have. And so I, I know that there's some issue concern going around that we've committed a couple hundred thousand, and, and that is not the case. We haven't even done our budget yet. And our budget for capital projects is $300,000 to $400,000. So a $200,000 kick would be, it would be difficult to do that, but we'll see. We ha- like I said, we haven't worked on our budget yet, that isn't coming until August 14th. Then we had soccer in, and soccer is going to play JV at McCarty Park, at those nice soccer fields down there, and then they're going to play varsity at the high school on the turf. And so that is a little bit of change for us. They anticipate having 500 children playing. And so, you know, these sports programs are very important to our community, and our strategy has always been a public-private partnership. You folks come with some money, we will try to provide the land and some additional funding. And that's the way we've approached tennis, soccer, that's the way we're approaching hockey, baseball, and softball. So that has always been our strategy. A couple of things that are coming up next year, soccer's going to try to give us six to eight weeks on those soccer fields with no playing activity, like move their camps and stuff, because Devin would really like to oversee that field, or those fields, and get them even nicer than they already are. So we're going to work with soccer on that. A couple of things that are coming up for surplus in underneath our part of the agenda, one of them is we have some light poles from Field A that are for surplus that we don't need any longer, and the other thing is the skateboard park equipment. And we do have our vice chairman here from Park Board if we have some questions on that, but we have struggled with this issue for many years. I think the skateboard came down in about, about four years ago?
2015.
2015. So it's been down for quite a while, and the reason we had to take it down was, it was really on school district land, and they wanted that for their marching band practice, and so we had to, we had to move that off. So it's been sitting in storage, we've tried to sell it, we've had a couple people, we've had one person come to Park Board and ask, you know, if we could put it up somewhere. And again, we, we had the decision of, we, we have a public-private partnership on these sorts of things, and if you come to us with some folks that are really interested in it, and they're able to do some fundraising, we could see if we could find a place for it. The one thing that we're, we want to be careful of is, we want to do a comprehensive land use plan for that new land that we've acquired in Aspen Park, that Peterson land. And so we're really not at the point right now where we're going to start committing different pieces of land to different projects until we get that comprehensive plan done. So that's in the works. But as I said, our vice chairman is here on that surplus equipment. If you folks have some questions, I am going to move that we put it up for surplus, to move it on, if the, if the folks that are really interested in skateboard park are want to come forward. I, I'm guessing we'd want to have new equipment anyway, that's been sitting there for numerous years, and I, I would think that there's probably some updated stuff that they would prefer to have. So that is, that's where we're at on Park Board. We're going to work on the budget, and then we'll be coming to you for our discussion on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Which brings us to the first thing, the 36 athletic field lights.
I would make a move to call those, declare them surplus, and we want it over 500.
If it's over $500 in value, we are required to take sealed bids. If it's under $500 in value, we can negotiate a sale, but I would think that 36 field lights are probably going to be valued at more than $500.
Over $500? Is that all we have to say?
Yep.
Okay. Over $500.
I have a motion from Fish, second from Parsons, to declare the 36 athletic field lights surplus and put a value of 501 dollars, that's over $500. And you three to my left are the appraisers.
Devin, you don't have any place to use these lights, soccer fields, anything like that? Okay, thank you.
With that being said, I have a motion, a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. We have next up some skateboard equipment, a wedge, a grind rail, step boxes, a half-pipe, a half-pyramid planter, and a quarter pipe.
We do have someone that is interested in some of this equipment, not necessarily all of it. We've been looking for, for a buyer for a very long time, so we're sort of excited about that. And I would make a motion to declare this surplus with a cost of over $500, Mayor. On each piece, $500 on each piece.
I have a motion from Fish, second from Parsons, to declare the skateboard park equipment surplus and assign a value of over $500 per piece. And that said, any discussion?
So the grind rail was pretty cheap originally, does that make any difference if we say it's still forbid, right?
Correct, they're all, everything's going to be in the advertisement forbid.
That being said, I have a motion, a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, and it is Ms. Clark, Ms. Fish, and Mr. Parsons on that one. Anything else in park and rec?
The pool does have a closing date of August 15th, so they will be, about nine days, they'll be closing for the season.
That's all we have there.
All right. We'll move on to administration, we have a Facebook policy discussion.
So I'll talk about this. It was brought to my attention that the city Facebook page, people weren't able to see the comments, or see that others had commented. Just wanted to kind of have a general discussion about what the stance would be. One comment was made that a person felt their First Amendment rights were being infringed because they had commented and then their post was not visible to others. So we're currently allowing commenting, they're being hidden, or, I guess, I don't know what the, the way to say that is, is, but they're not 100% visible, and sometimes they are visible, sometimes they aren't. So there's some concern there about how that is and what's going on there. So we'd like to just kind of set up a overall plan of how we're going to use social media as a community. I think it's a tool that can be used to, to reach the residents, keep them up to date, and provide feedback. I know that feedback has, has been key in some of the decisions, and, you know, when residents reach out to me, I don't take it lightly. My job here is not to, to speak my opinion, it is always to speak the opinion of the residents. Fireworks is a tough one, and the majority of the residents that reach out to me said, no thanks. So the, Facebook can be a tool for us to understand that. One of the concerns was is that even the council members don't have access to see what those comments are, so if a resident were to tag one of us council members and ask us to help with something, we can't see that. So I just ask that we get this brought on the agenda based on feedback from residents.
Any other discussion, opinions?
I would just say, I mean, as I understand it, our Facebook is set up to provide notices, not for citizens to make public comment. The First Amendment issues come in when you allow public comment on something, and then you delete the public comments, which becomes then a regulation of First Amendment rights. If you have it set up so nobody can make public comment, there's not a First Amendment right to be able to post something on a Facebook site that's not set up for public comment. So it, it's, once you have that set So it's, once you have that setting of public comment and you try and delete it or not let people make comments is where you have those First Amendment right issues. But I don't think that's how ours is set up.
So I tested that, Lisa, and a resident commented on one of the Facebook posts from the city webpage and I was not able to see it. And the resident specifically told me where they posted it and I wasn't able to see it. And that's why there's the concern is, is we are allowing commenting. Commenting does happen. If you pull up the city Facebook page, it will say six comments and you may see one or two, but not all six. So I don't know what's triggering it to do that, but right now residents are seeing that they are commenting, they're able to comment, and their information is not able to be seen by others. And that's why the concern was brought to me. So I don't know if there's settings that we need to change. I don't know what the settings are currently, but that was really kind of where this all stemmed from was if we're going to have it as a notification only, then that's one thing. But with the residents able to comment and then those comments not to be seen, I guess my stance, you know, that's why I brought this up.
I think at one of our last meetings, Dana, didn't you bring up that there's a way to turn off the comments or make the public aware that it's only informational only?
Well, Christine and I have spoke about this. And Christine's going to reach out to the person that helped set up their page initially because I can, when I do a post on another page, I can turn off commenting, but Christine sent some screenshots over and hers is, it's set up differently. So that's where the problem is making it truly an informational-only page. Right now, it's not. There's a bunch of keywords set up that eliminate a lot of commenting, but not all of the commenting. And if a person themselves tried, like I did a post Thursday night after our briefing meeting and sent it to Christina, it still showed up. So as a citizen, it looks like I've asked a question, it's sitting there, no one's answering me. So that was kind of where that discussion led into the pinned post at the top, which I believe Christina got a pinned post on there. But I'd still love for us to figure out the technical issue so it's just...
Yes.
Yeah.
Very much so.
Yeah, it would be a lot cleaner.
And again, that's what I gathered from the history. The intent was to be informational only, which I agree with, but I also agree to Tim's point that the public doesn't know that. We don't want to mislead them in a sense to think that we're all seeing it because some of us don't even know how to work it.
I saw this on the agenda tonight and obviously it came because of fireworks earlier, but I also wanted to make comment on this. Generally speaking, I know as we're talking about a Facebook policy here, but I think there's a bigger picture with social media in general. You know, it's not going to go away. It's certainly going to be something that's, you know, going to become bigger and bigger. And, you know, I'd love to see our city, you know, open up and embrace it a little bit more. What happens from a resident's perspective is you post something as the administrator of the site. I can comment on the post, I just can't post something on the wall. So like in Facebook, you have a wall and generally like I could go to any of your walls if we were private friends and I could post something on there. But you can comment once the city posts something, but I don't know what those keywords are anyways. It's just one form of social media that I'd like to see us take a look at embracing a little bit more. I mean, I know it's been huge controversy since even the recent election. You know, there's a lot of negativity that happens in Facebook and other social media platforms, but there's also a lot of positive things that happen. I mean, a few of the things that, you know, I looked into and, you know, I gathered from numerous resources, of course, got it all on the internet, but you believe what you can on the internet, right? But I took an average of all these different research firms and sixty-eight percent or more of adults in the U.S. utilize Facebook. So I thought that was pretty powerful as far as trying to, you know, communicate as a city, a good tool that we could use, maybe more often or maybe even fund a little bit in the communication. Coincidentally, seventy-three percent of Americans use YouTube, which I'm glad we post our city meetings on YouTube. That's a compliment to the city. Several other platforms though, when you look at the sixty-eight percent from Facebook, when you add up the, up to twenty percent of the U.S. uses Snapchat already, which is one of the newest social media platforms, Instagram up to thirty-five percent, Twitter over twenty-five percent, Pinterest almost thirty percent, WhatsApp over twenty percent. When you look at that, I'm sure that that percentage of sixty-eight percent, although Facebook is the biggest number, people use some form or another in a much higher capacity than sixty-eight percent, I would say, based on all those statistics. Nearly half of Facebook users get their news there and rely on Facebook solely for their news source, which is a little astonishing, you know, but it's a fact. The median, you know, and one of the things I looked at too is the median age of Brandon being, you know, thirty-four, which isn't too far off from some of our neighbors. But when you look at our population under eighteen, we're like well over thirty percent. I think our neighbors in Sioux Falls are somewhere around that twenty-five percentage range, according to census data that I was looking at. Coincidentally, Snapchat has the largest base of users under the age eighteen and it's something that we probably aren't even thinking about as a city to send out, you know, alerts and things like that to educate our population. So I'm bringing all this up, but one of the things that I thought about suggesting, based on, I know there's been a lot of discussion in social media, not just Facebook, but what about the possibility of having a city intern that's interested in communications that would come in, you know, maybe it's a summer internship, maybe we feel it out as a non-high-cost role, but that, that basically can help coordinate the communication. Now that person's not going to be educated in every single department of the city, but they could most certainly coordinate questions that would come in on a public forum. If we had a, you know, Brandon, you know, ask your question or whatever you want to call it, the, you know, a communications liaison or intern or even a part-time communications person could coordinate that information. A question comes in and they tag, you know, Chuck or they tag Barb and of course, you know, you're not watching all that, but maybe that wasn't even the right person the question should go to and the communication person helps speed the liaison to get that question to the right person, comes up with a response, either presents it to you guys or just responds based on the information they find out from the city employee. I mean, I think that it'd be a huge win for communication and, I mean, that's just a suggestion. I definitely don't have the answer, maybe there's something totally different, but just embracing that. I mean, we have a very, very young community here. But even Mr. Erby, you know, he has Twitter and I had no idea we had a Twitter account. And, you know, he's my senior slightly. And that was news to me tonight that we had a Twitter account, so I didn't even find that, you know, and I'm thirty-seven, so, and I use social media several platforms. So I just, I'd like to see us do more on social media, all over the board in general. And there's an expert here that probably knows a lot more than me.
I don't know about an expert, but push the button there.
Fire in the hole. All right. Well, I actually just came here tonight because I wanted to hear the mayor say grind rail. Sean Niested, seven-twenty-one Magnolia.
Thank you, Sean.
I really wanted to hear you say grind rail. That's all, the only reason I'm here. No, when I saw Facebook on the agenda, I wanted to come down here and just share some of my thoughts. It's part of what I do as a living and part of what I do as a couple side jobs. So just wanted to give you some thoughts. Unfortunately, not everyone's probably going to like exactly what I have to say here tonight, so take it with a grain of salt, don't slash my tires afterwards, because I couldn't tell you who even has access to the City of Brandon Facebook page at this point. So I always think of social media not as a one-way street. It's a two-way form of communication and it only works well when it is a two-way form of communication. I think of social media platforms like Facebook more like a communication tool, like a phone. You can pick up a phone and you can talk and talk and talk all you want, you can shout your message as many times as you want, but if nobody's on the other end, you're wasting your time. Nobody's hearing that message and that message, you might as well speak to the wall. So I want to talk about some of the ideas of properly using social media and how that gives you the opportunity, not always to have to be on the defensive, but it allows you the opportunity to be the source of truth, to be that source of the people where they know they can go and get their information. And you can also be trusted because they know that it's coming from an official source. Then people don't have to go out to these unofficial places where who knows who is running it and giving the information. So in preparation this morning, I wanted to look up a couple of numbers. I looked at the City of Brandon, South Dakota municipal government Facebook page. One thousand three hundred seventy-seven likes. Doesn't seem bad. Fifteen hundred forty-eight people follow it. That means if something comes up, there's a chance that it'll show up on their Facebook feed. You folks like to talk often about the Brandon Ask and Tell Group. Three thousand three hundred twenty-nine members. Double. Two times the number of people who are on the city's official page. Now to me, what that tells us is there's an appetite for information in this community and they're not getting it from the Brandon official page. So something else formed and that's where they're going for their information in this city. Just today, and this pains me to say it because this is probably what's going to get my tires slashed, there was a City of Brandon Facebook post today and it says this, "Intent of this page is to inform citizens. Page is not monitored on a daily basis. Comments are not visible to the public. Please contact City Hall for questions." And then it lists City Hall's phone number. Now Dana said earlier tonight when we were talking about fireworks, it takes a lot for people to pick up the phone and make a call. Tim, you said earlier, talking about word getting out about the fireworks this last year, people getting tickets and citations, that social media was powerful. When you use social media and then you direct them to do something else, that'd be like your voicemail on your phone saying, "Thanks for calling. Don't call me. Send me an email instead." Your social media should be that, that choice. People should be able to communicate with you if they so choose to go that way. Pointing them another direction, in my opinion, isn't doing it right. TJ read off some of his demographics that he found from Facebook. I found these from Facebook itself. Fifty-six percent of online seniors above the age of sixty-five are on Facebook. Sixty-three percent between the ages of fifty and sixty-four are on Facebook. Eighty-seven percent of online users between the ages of eighteen and twenty-nine, so the other end of the perspectum, of the spectrum, they're on Facebook as well. And this one shocked me, half of those between the ages of eighteen and thirty-four check Facebook immediately when they wake up. That's where they're getting their information, before they're out of bed, before they're brushing their teeth. Now, why to this, why is this important? That's the whole spectrum. That's everybody. That's all of the taxpayers, that's nearly all of your constituents, that's nearly all of the voters, that's nearly all of the families, not only across this country, but in this town. The nationwide statistic is four out of five Americans are on Facebook. Now I'd like to think that Brandon is a higher educated community and we tend to skew a little younger than a lot of places, so I could argue that that number in this town is probably a lot higher than eighty percent. Another term that you hear a lot when you talk about Facebook, specifically Facebook and all of the various social media platforms is algorithm. Basically, that is the formula that Facebook has that decides who sees what. If you're not aware, just because you post something on Facebook doesn't mean anybody sees it. Facebook decides who is that message important for and it also decides you as a user, what do you want to see? So there are different ways to give yourself an advantage and if you're running a page group or a business group, you can try to get your message to more people. And Facebook laid it out when they changed their algorithms slightly earlier this year. They said commenting is sharing more important than likes and clicks. So that's encouraging the dialogue. They want people to comment. You may not like what they say, but you want those comments because if that information is something that they, they feel important to them, so much so that they're going to take a moment and type something, that's going to come back on their screen the next time that page says something. And that's why dialogue is critically important. Video is really important on Facebook. Pictures are important. Video's more important. Live video is king. Live video tends to get six times the amount of interaction that regular videos do on Facebook. I looked through the Brandon official page today. I found one video, it's one second in length. It's a sprinkler head. Experts also suggest that you invest in an ad budget. Organic reach, your natural reach on Facebook is declining because of these algorithms. Facebook's out there to make money. They want to make money and if you want, if you want people to see what you're saying on there, you got to pay. Now, that doesn't mean you got to pay a lot. I know a lot of organizations, a lot of businesses in this area, twenty bucks, fifty bucks. The good news there is it allows you to target who you want to reach. You can set it up to go after certain age groups, certain, you know, men, women, you can target the City of Brandon, so people outside of Brandon don't get that message. It's fairly simple. Also, Facebook wants you to build a sense of community. This is one of their big things in twenty-eighteen. They want people to interact, they want pages to interact. I looked through it today. I didn't see where the City of Brandon page wants to share anything from the school district, from a local nonprofit. I did see, I think maybe one pool share. But it's those things that, that people, that can get people to interact and you can use other people's information, other people's posts, to draw people to yours. It's all about that community and the dialogue is what, what really rewards you on getting on more pages. So that's a couple ideas, a couple ways that Facebook says, here's how you're successful on our free platform and if you want to pay us, you can be a little more successful. Now, social media's not a fad. It's not going away. I resisted it long ago. I was probably the last person at my previous job to get Facebook. I hated it. I hated the idea of it, but it's not going away. Now, almost every successful company out there, especially the larger ones, they have dedicated staff whose job is only to be on social media. It builds their brand and it allows them to communicate with customers because if they come to their page, they expect that you're there and give them an answer. Now, in my opinion, as a local government and as representatives of the people, not only do you have an opportunity, you also have a responsibility to reach out to the community and be their source and be their voice. I entertain any questions if you happen to have any.
I guess it'd be interesting to see, I don't know if you looked at the numbers, but when you compare per capita, so if you look at Sioux Falls versus their likes versus, you know, Brandon versus our likes, I used to live in Harrisburg and I compared theirs and they have more likes and less people. So, you know, it'd be interesting to see, you know, what, what others are in the area because it's, you know, again, it's, we've got six, maybe seven hundred people now on texted lead. We've got thirteen hundred on Facebook and there's some overlap there. And when we look at key items that we need to push out, we've got to have eighty to ninety percent reach, not ten percent. So I really appreciate you coming in, Sean, and putting this information together. It's really important for us to hear how we can use tools. Now, obviously, do we have the staff to do that? I'm going to tell you absolutely not, but there's a lot of things that we can do and the one thing that puts a smile on my face is the fact that you're a resident, you know this, and you're willing to come here and share your knowledge with us tonight. And, and that means a lot and it's the type of thing that, whether there's a committee or whatever it is, I think empowering people with expertise, those that are subject matter experts, that's, that's where we need to put the horsepower behind and I truly appreciate you coming in.
Thank you. One, one thought I have is the company I work for, I couldn't tell you how many people have access to our page and we're a five billion dollar global organization. It's a term called trust agents and you don't post on behalf of yourself, but you have access to it and so you can post at times. So, you know, that's an idea. When you don't have staff dedicated to it, you could have multiple people who could have access to it. And going forward, if there's anything I can do, anybody I can work with, I have a lot of ideas and some of the stuff on there is kind of cringe-worthy. I'm really afraid today's post, we're going to see somewhere down the road of how not to do social media, that's going to be an example. So anything I can do to help the city, because in the end, it's reaching the residents, getting that message out, just as we've heard here, we've got to have, we've got to have tools to communicate with the people in this community and whether it be Facebook, Twitter, Snapchat, all of those, it's just another tool in your toolbox.
Thanks, Sean. Greatly appreciated.
So just real quick, oh, sorry Chuck.
Go ahead.
What rules, regulations do we have in place currently that determines who can or cannot be an administrator of the city page? So like Sean just mentioned, you know, maybe have more people that are watching it to, you know, do that, because I'm all for, Lisa does a training session on, these are the rules of what we can and can't do and these are, you know, this is how we break the regulations for First Amendment rights. I mean, train away and once you're certified, I think that's how Sioux Falls PD does it, is they have people that are authorized and they go through a training and it's not just, here's the keys to the car, it's you're trained. So what would it take to get to that level so that we could have? Is there anything limiting the city currently from saying all city council members can be admins of the city page? I guess that's the simple way to say it.
I don't know how it's set up. I don't know how I don't know how it's set up. I don't know how many administrators you can have. So, I can't answer that question. What I can tell you is, the past discussions of the council were, we don't have staff capability to go on and correct things and to answer people's comments, and I think that's why it was set up, to do no notifications. So, we didn't have enough people to go in and respond to people's comments, and the concern was if we don't have somebody able to respond to all the comments, we're not providing the service to Facebook, 'cause people are posting stuff, asking questions, and we don't have the time to respond. From training standpoint, the First Amendment concern simply is that you can't delete stuff. So, you delete something that is untrue, that has profanity. I mean, there's very few limitations that the city can have in terms of what can be deleted off of there, because then you're infringing on people's First Amendment rights. 'Cause you can walk in here with some t-shirt that has profanity on it, and we can't say, "Go home and change clothes," 'cause that's the First Amendment right to be here. Same thing. That stuff is gonna get on the public access, and my training, somebody would be, it's on there, we're not gonna delete it. Some things on there that maybe it's an opinion, that is it an opinion or is it a fact that's false, we're not gonna delete it. We can maybe respond to it, but we're not gonna delete it. And so, you're gonna get, and, and so I can do training of can't delete. I can do training of can't deny somebody the ability to post something, and that's the training I would have to do. And I think that's the context of the history, and, and somebody else can speak to that. I was giving the history of when it was set up. My recollection is the comments in this room were, we don't have the time, the staff the capability to respond to everything, so let's just do it for information purposes only. There's other social media out there that people can use to speak what they wanna speak. So, that would be my training. I, I wouldn't have a lot of training, and I can't answer your question about who can be an administrator, 'cause I don't know how it's set up.
Generally, Facebook pages have no limit on the number of administrators, and there's different levels of roles within there. So, you can give full access, somewhat access, and you're a glorified member. It's how it works. When it comes to, you were talking, thoughts slipped my mind. Oh, having folks... Wow. Tim, you laughed, and I lost it. Oh, when you talk about people saying things that may be negative and against our community, I would hope, and maybe I'm an optimist, that the folks, other folks in this town, if we had good dialogue and discussion going on on that page, I think the vast majority of us would step up and say, "That's not the case. Here's how I feel as a resident. Thanks for your opinion." In business, you call them brand ambassadors. I think in this community, anyone who's on this council would likely be one of those, and I know a lot of good folks here in the city would, would do that as well.
Chuck?
I was just gonna add, I appreciate the comments tonight. I think for now, we keep it as informational only, but I'd like to keep it on the agenda. I'd like to know what other communities do. What concerns me is if we embrace this, as Sean, you're suggesting, I don't think I should be allowed to get on there and say, "This is my opinion, and this is what we're gonna do," 'cause I'm only one vote up here. So, that, that's a concern I have with that.
One thing you can do as that is you don't necessarily have to comment as the City of Brandon. If you're on that page, you could comment as yourself. I guess as a constituent, I, I guess as a, as a voter in this town, I don't, I wouldn't mind. If, if you wanna share your opinion, again, in my opinion, this is a tool. This is a, this is another way of having a town hall discussion. This is another way of picking up a phone and, and having a conversation with somebody. So, that's, that's my thought on that. But I understand what you're saying, to speak on the behalf of the city as, as one-fifth. That would be definitely something you'd have to set parameters up.
So, Christine, I appreciate your seeing how it's set up and get it cleaned up so the residents aren't expecting us to answer, at least at this point. I agree with Chuck. We can keep, keep discussing it. I believe that the school district has the same setup as we do. They, it is an informational-type page, and it is not a comment-type page. So, I don't think we're out of sync with them. Not saying that's right or wrong, but I do believe that they're doing it the same way at, at this point.
Thank you, Sean, again. All right. I, I, yeah, I think that the ongoing discussion needs to continue to occur, 'cause you guys are absolutely right. Social media is not gonna go away. It's only gonna get bigger and bigger. So, we need to stay into, in tune with it.
Just one more quick thought, TJ Cameron. You know, listening to Sean, that was pretty awesome statistics, but the, you know, post that came out today, I looked it up while he was talking about the, oh, this is all it's for, and, you know, call, don't message. There's not even a button on our Facebook page to even send a message to the city. I mean, I think at the very, very least, right now, the button that's flagged says "Call", and if you go to other options, you're usually able to at least send a message. I mean, at very least, if we could send a private message, I mean, that'd be like a voicemail. There's not any more than a voicemail that we're answering all the time. You know, opening it up to that, where it wouldn't necessarily be a pub, public comment, but somebody that checks that, even if we say, "Hey," you know, I think you can add auto responses, I believe. I know I can with my business. And you could say, "These messages will be answered within seventy-two hours" or something, like just at very least, 'cause some people just, they just aren't comfortable on the phone, you know? I mean, social media, you see kids and even adults that are locked to their phone, and their head never comes up, you know? I mean, it's, it's just something, just the message piece even. It's just like a voicemail if they're asking a question. Somebody could at least check that.
Okay, thank you. We have a city engineer to welcome to our midst.
City Council hired Tammy Janzma for the city engineer's position. The council needs to formally appoint her as the city engineer.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Parsons, second from Wakefield to appoint our city engineer.
Before you do that, though, as a point of order, we, we would need you, Mr. Beasley, to declare that you have removed the prior appointment of John Brown as the city engineer, so then we can make an appointment. So, I need you to declare that you're removing Mr. Brown, notify the city council here, it's fine, and then you can do the appointment.
Question, Lisa, is it John, or is it Stockwell, or is it both?
It's, it's actually John Brown.
Yeah. So, I am removing Mr. John Brown as city engineer at this point in time. Does that need to be a motion and a second?
No, no, you just need to notify, and, and you've done that now, so thank you.
So, now I have a motion from Mr. Parsons, and a second from Mr. Wakefield, correct? With that being said, that is the appointment. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, welcome.
Thank you.
A familiar face. Since you're now appointed, or the city engineer, you're also going to be our alternative representative to the MPO.
Yeah, and just a little bit of discussion on the MPO. That stands for the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and within this organization, there's three committees. So, we have the Citizens Advisory Committee, and Kim Surwicke's on that board, and she does a great job representing Brandon. There's a Technical Advisory Committee, and that's the one that I would really like to be part of, because it's a lot more of the engineering and numbers part of it. And then the last committee is the Urbanized Development Committee, and this committee is really geared towards elected officials. So, if anybody on the board would be interested in being on it, then by all means, you should appoint someone on the board. Otherwise, I'm perfectly happy with taking somebody's place on that.
I know, I, I'm the designated one for that, the UDC, but they move their meetings to like three forty-five in the afternoon. It's from seven o'clock in the evening, and my prior engagement as a schoolteacher was not allowing me to get to Sioux Falls at three forty-five. So, so usually Dennis has been sitting in on those.
Yeah. I think it would be appropriate for Tammy to, to act as your representative on the UDC.
All right. Okay. So, I have an appointment for Miss Tammy Janzma to continue, or to take some spots. I need a motion and a second, I believe.
Motion.
Motion from Parsons, second from Wakefield to appoint her as the alternative representative. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. With discussion on authorizing the engineer to solicit, solicit, excuse me, engineering proposals.
I had asked that this be put on the agenda. I just wanted to make it clear with this position, what they were authorized to do, not do, and I guess we, we've got some of our bigger projects set for next year, right? And we've got commitments to have an engineering firm look at those, which I consider a consultant at this point. But I just wanted to get the council's blessing that we make it real clear to Tammy that on any of these other smaller projects, and I don't know how you define those, and Lisa, I don't know how we write this up, but that she's authorized to pick an engineering firm that's qualified to do those smaller projects at this point. And along with that, I think at some point in the future, we should consider a little bit more defined policy on maybe if you get above a certain dollar amount, or for Tammy to do some investigating to some other communities to define above a certain dollar amount that you put things up for bids, so to speak, or something like that. But for tonight, I'd like to discuss, I don't know if you're ready to commit to doing something, or at least we have to write up something formally, just to give Tammy that, or the city engineer that authority to pick on smaller projects, you know, for the time being.
Yeah. So, professional engineering services, you don't have to publicly bid, like you do for certain types of contract and, and purchases. That's an exception under the public bid laws. You could always set some parameters that you want at a certain level to be publicly bid, or otherwise, the city just has the ability to retain somebody to do professional engineering services. So, if you wanna delegate that to a certain level or everything, you can certainly do that as part of her job description. It doesn't have to be, I'd have to go back and look at the statute, but I'm fairly confident that it doesn't have to be the city council. Just the city, and who the city is, is who you designate.
I guess my concern, would she have that authority now if a smaller project came up for, say, I don't know, three hundred thousand, that she could go, "I think this firm is better suited to do this"? Could she just make that choice?
What, what I need to do is look at the statute. I didn't know if this was a point of discussion. I, I could look it up in thirty seconds and give you the answer. I just don't have that answer right now. I can tell you it's not part of the public bid, and I just don't know if city means you, if city means Brian, if city means the city engineer. So, I, I can answer that, but just not at this very moment.
That's the discussion I want.
So, I can look at that and report back to you. I don't know that anything's coming up in the next two weeks, that we need it right away, but I'll have an answer for you next meeting.
Yeah, and I think this is a good point to, to discuss, Chuck. I, I really appreciate you putting this on, on the agenda. It's, it's key to the success of this position to have them empowered to make those selections and, and to use their expertise, and, and we hired a subject manager expert on purpose. So, empowering Tammy to make those decisions is, is something that I, I've been looking forward to very specifically. I had the opportunity to spend some time on the phone with Tammy today to talk about some of the current projects that are on the list, and some of the findings that she's having, whether it's financial or timing or whatever. And I can assure you guys that I am extremely impressed with the quality of engineer that we were able to select through this process. And what, what we discussed today blew me away, that she was able to take the time already in the short time that she's been here, and put that information together. So, I, I'm very excited to, to empower our new engineer to, to make those decisions. And I'm also looking forward to pulling some of the weight off of Brian and having a lot of this dialogue go directly to Tammy. A lot of these bids and so forth, it's, it's gonna be great to have that go to Tammy and have her advise Brian and keep him up to speed. But not all of that needs to hit Brian's desk. He's got plenty on his plate. So, I really look forward to that.
So, if we can just keep this on the agenda and maybe try to settle it next time?
Thank you. All right. Item E., first reading of ordinance five sixty-seven supplemental two thousand and eighteen budget.
The first one would be the general fund for the council. That would be the force account agreement that you approved, I think, last meeting, to increase that force count by thirty thousand. That would obviously come out of assigned fund balance. The next one is your third cent fund. That would be the Peterson land that we bought earlier this year. That would just be to put that budget in there for that. And then the third one would be the Rushmore Drive, kinda Teton area project that we had started, and that would be the two hundred and ten thousand.
So, I had a question, sorry, on that source of funding. Is that the one with Stockwell?
The top one?
No, second one.
The source of funding is just where the revenue is coming from.
Okay.
So, the first one is the expenditure. The second one would be where the revenue is coming from.
So, on the first one, is that something that would come under Tammy's purview now to kinda monitor that, instead of things just automatically going in there and getting billed?
She's going to monitor it. You guys approved an agreement with Stockwell's to approve the extra thirty thousand dollars.
That doesn't necessarily mean that we spend that money, Chuck.
Correct.
So, Tammy and I had some very, very good dialogue about that as well today, and, and monitoring the, the use of that fund, and, and as she gets up to speed, really looking at transitioning that, the use of that fund to something completely different. Something like a, a project over on the east side of town, we could use some surveying, which may be a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars. That's the intent, and, and Tammy has a really good plan on that. So, I think we'll see that professional services, slush fund if you will, really change how it's, how it's handled, so.
And this is a supplemental budget, so this would be increasing that budget of what you guys approved. Yeah, it doesn't necessarily mean we would spend it all.
We do. Motion from Clark, second from Wakefield to approve the reading of ordinance five sixty-seven supplemental budget for two thousand and eighteen. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We have a GIS presentation.
Marcus Hasselhoff, our GIS intern for the summer, is leaving us next week. Needs to get back to Brookings.
My first question is, is there a way to project the map somewhere?
Yep.
Well, Marcus is setting up. I'd just like to say, he's had quite the tasks this summer. With him, starting with Paul, and Paul kinda given him a vision of what kind of maps and the layouts to do, and then me coming in two weeks ago and kinda changing it around and adding some things to it. He's done a really good job putting these maps together, and I'm excited for you to see some of them.
So, you're saying Paul was helpful?
He tried to be.
I knew when we hired him, he came along.
I was skeptical. He's her first one, but I was.
Wow.
You had a good education, Doug.
Wow, yeah.
Basically, my job was to walk around with an iPad and a big cord through my back, trying not to creep some of the people out, but it happened. So, I was a weird guy walking around town all summer. So, the first map that I did was this transportation map. And if you look at it at first glance, it will look like nothing. It will look very confusing. So, categorize it. You got all those things on the left. We'll start with the buildings. Turn all these off. These are all the buildings in Brandon, and they're colorized by based on what they are. So, the blue buildings are all residential buildings. The red ones are schools. The green ones are all commercial buildings. The yellow ones are all churches. So, basically, it's more of a point of reference, saying if you wanna, let's say you're building, I don't know, another city hall or something, you want it a mile away from sunshine or something. GIS would calculate it for you, and give you all the options of where you can put the building at. The next one was every street light, and those are just all those little orange dots we got around. Nine hundred and nineteen of them. And if you click on one of them, they will give you the pole ID number and the material that they're made of, and then the wattage of each light pole. So, you don't have to actually go out, find the light pole, see the water. You can just go online, look it up right here.
Is there an easy way to tell who owns that light? 'Cause I know there's some discussion about, we have some different ownership right on the lights versus Sioux Valley.
Yeah, we, we own all the lights on Sioux.
Yeah, we own all the lights on Sioux, Holly, Aspen.
Redwood. And then Split Rock.
And I'm working on categorizing that, so like, they can make it show up different colors based on the ones. And then we did every road in Brandon. They're just categorized by the speed limit, so nothing too major there. Then we did the traffic lights, symbolized by a gray traffic light. And we got the rail signals, so the, basically the warning time that the railroad is coming. And then the last one was every single sign in Brandon.
Look at those signs.
Yeah, there's a little bit of them. We got 1,230. So it tells you when the sign was installed, what type of the sign is, stop, yield, street sign, and then the substrate, too, most of them are high intensity, so you can also make it, like, we got to replace them, what, every eight years or so, I think? So you can also field it where only the ones that were made eight years ago will show up, so that you know exactly what's going to be replaced. So that was the first map. That was the biggest one. And then the next one is this transportation assessment map. The main thing here is all the green paths are sidewalks, and these are actually categorized by the condition that they're in, so green means good, red means it's poor and probably needs to be replaced. We only have one at the very bottom that I found that really needs to be replaced badly. Then there's another color that's not showing up that's fair. All the little dots are curb ramps, so basically those little, I don't know, I don't know, yeah, you guys have to talk about, you know, the curb ramps, yeah, exactly. In the future, we want to do like an ADA thing, like the city of Sioux Falls GIS has it, where each curb ramp has an ADA accessibility number and score based on the height, the width, the measurement, see how accessible Brandon is totally. And then this big blue thing that goes all the way around here, that's bike paths, the main bike path in Brandon that I walked. And then, I know your trail connectivity is a big one, I started doing the trails throughout that, and those are those little pink ones. I haven't got very far because can't do much signal in all those trees, but it's an adventure. And the next one is, I know this is going on right now, so this is the Slurry Seal map in Brandon. These are all the roads here, and they are categorized by what year they are. So like, if you click this road right here, it tells us 2018. That's what's done, and that's when it is. So, go up here, 2019, so those are, the red ones are the ones that are the tracks here. Obviously, there's a legend for all this and stuff, too. Go on to it. So the next one is Devon and the Parks community get to walk around with a weird hat and collect every single ash tree. So they're, you want it to go around and grab a piece of paper, but this might be a little bit easier. He's, what, say halfway through? Said halfway through, right?
Uh, no.
Still some of these collected so far. And this next one is the Parks and Rec map. This is the map that we're thinking about publishing to the website, so everyone can see it. It'll look a little bit different than what most of them look like, because what you can see here is what basically only I can see, and if we open it up to the public, they won't be able to edit anything. So this is what the public will see. And then if you click on this little bench right here, there's a photo of it, the information and where to call to if you want to reserve it or something like that, so just more ease of access.
How hard is it to get that on the city website? Because that's pretty awesome for parks.
It's just the link, literally just the link. We're working on it, because we got to make an agreement statement saying this information is not fully accurate, but it won't be like super precise within around 3D, I think, but can't be too safe. And now this last one is very rough, because I spent about an hour on it this whole summer, but I think it just looks cool. So if I'd spent like a week on it, it'd look a lot better, but this is something you could think about publishing to eventually. It's a 3D map of Brandon, if it ever pops up. So you can see the streetlights, light poles, and there are buildings, it'll show up all in 3D. Obviously, I have to go in and change the heights of all the buildings, so they'll all look different, but you can roam around, see all the traffic signs and stuff like that, basically just in a 3D version.
That's nice.
That looks kind of cool. And that's basically what I've done this summer. So then...
I'd say he's done a lot this summer.
Yeah. Then what we're thinking about for the future was obviously that ADA sidewalk capability, but then more access to the public in real-time GIS stuff, where this thing is through a thing called Esri, a company called Esri, and they actually do traffic things. They estimate how bad traffic is at a certain time of day everywhere in the country, basically. So I can upload a map to the city website saying, here's what traffic will look like at this time and stuff like that. We can also do a construction map, saying, hey, here's where construction is going on now, here's where it's going to be eventually, stuff like that. And then a weather driving advisory, like, we got a lot of snow on one road, say, hey, put a red mark on this road saying, hey, don't drive here, flooding, stuff like that. I was thinking about doing something for the golf course, but on the golf course website, where you could, I can map out the golf course, say, hey, here's where the tee box is, here's where the hole is, how long each hole is, and then what each hole par is, basically. So I went onto the golf course website, and there's no real information on the holes, just kind of tells you, hey, the golf course is here. And then the other thing was just kind of data that we can just put in, either make available to the public or privately. We can put, we can map out census data, so basically, hey, this is where the young people are living in the town, this is where the older people are living in town, stuff like that, other demographics. City of Sioux Falls just came up this one, I thought was kind of interesting. They have a map where it has the last seven days of every crime that has been caused in the city, basically. And I mean, obviously, Brandon doesn't have as many crimes as Sioux Falls, but we could go up to traffic violations, car accidents, stuff like that, we can map that out and easily get to the public in a week or two, if we really wanted to, if I had the data. And then, obviously, so planning, locations for buildings, stuff like that. And then the other thing is permits. You know, permits are a hard thing to get out, and I am working on a parcel map that has all the zoning information on it, and I can attach a permit to each parcel, saying, hey, this is what the permit looks like for this one, so you don't have to go digging for every single one.
Okay. Well, it's a good presentation. You were quite busy.
Any other questions?
So one of the things that is also really powerful at GIS is when we start tying some of the water meters, we can start tying some of that to GIS as well. So then you can use that graphically to understand where the high load areas are in town. So there's ways that engineers can do goofy stuff with Excel and dump it into this GIS data, so we can pull our water meters, and every year, we could take input for this address, they use this much water for the year. So just different tools that we can use the GIS for. So as a council, we just need to kind of keep in mind what information would help us make decisions, and then really put that on the plate of the engineering team to get that in the GIS data. ADA compliance is a great one. You can take pictures, and if anyone ever has a legal concern with other or outward ADA compliant, you literally pull it up, boom, you got a picture, you know when it was last replaced. So just a ton of stuff. So thank you very much for all the hard work this summer. Glad to have you.
Yeah, thank you.
Paul Sando, 1616 Locust Avenue. So when we set this up, I just wanted to remind the council, and Tammy and I have had some discussions about this. The GIS database for the city of Brandon was something that we wanted to keep affordable. We had three goals, was to keep it affordable, keep it user-friendly and up-to-date, and obviously, that's going to be Tammy's task. But I also wanted to mention, another thing Tammy and I talked about was the collaboration between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County and the city of Brandon. When we first got this set up, I was meeting with them, and they gave us their layers so that we could be consistent with the city of Brandon and the, or city of Sioux Falls and with Minnehaha County, too, as we continue to grow. And as they continue to grow, we're sharing that information with them, not just with our utilities, but also with our aerial imagery. And that aerial imagery is something that they update on a three- to four-year basis. And so as they do that, we can piggyback with them on the cost of what that aerial imagery is. It's fairly expensive, so if we just consider that as well. But I just wanted to remind the council what those three goals were, that we had intended when we originally set this up. And GIS is just a database of information, and like Tim said, it's endless. And so with that collaboration and continued communication with those two entities and other ones in the future, too, I see this GIS system being a huge asset to the city of Brandon.
All right, thank you.
So just for future reference, budgeting season's coming, how would we, you probably don't even know yet, Tammy, but budget-wise, are we sitting good? Do we want to try to allocate more money? Those types of questions, just to make sure that we're prepared. You know, I see the GIS as being a phenomenal tool. We can start using it to forecast when we need to do streets. That's a big one that a lot of communities use it for, is street conditions. I know that we've used, done street studies in the past, so where do you see us at? I mean, obviously, we could hire another person darn near full-time just to do GIS, but where would you like to see it go?
Right now, I think we have in budget about $10,000, and I don't think we're hitting that quite yet. We have one license, so everybody kind of shares it right now, and we have one login. I would like to have two licenses and be able to regulate it a little bit. We had a few issues with some credits, and we had those refunded, so it wasn't a big deal. But I would like to regulate a little bit, even since we have other people using it, like the Parks Department, and hopefully, we can get Public Works to use it a little bit and just keep growing it. I think a couple more iPads to do the inventory would be useful, and I think even the inspection department could probably use one. I think budget-wise, we're sitting pretty good on it.
My name is Colby Peterson from 1309 West Meadowbrook Trail here in Brandon. The work you do at GIS, I think is awesome, I think it's great. If you're looking to partner with somebody or have other community members get involved, as a world geography teacher, I teach at Harrisburg High School, and I use this program, I have for the last two years, and I actually have my students get out there and do some of this stuff. So if you're looking for the community and students can involve, that's another way to get the school involved. And schools, this is free for the schools. I use this account in Harrisburg, it's free for the school districts to get this curriculum and things like that, and do the mapping. I went to a GIS GPS training in Mitchell, South Dakota, here about three weeks ago, through Mitchell Tech. And so that's another way to get students involved and do some of this stuff with GIS and GPS, because it is not going away. If you have power lines go down, you can tell your people who fix those what tools they need to bring to those certain light poles or whatever. So it makes things, it streamlines things, makes things more efficient, effective here in the city. So if that's who you're looking to maybe partner with, that's some things to look at here as a school district here in Brandon, because I'm sure the teachers there would love to partner with you on some of those things.
Perfect.
Yeah, thank you.
That's Tammy, so you should get her card if you don't have it. Make sure you guys share contact information, that'd be great.
Yeah.
When we started this, we anticipated probably three years to log all of the information that we wanted, manholes, valves, light poles, et cetera. I think we're probably ahead of that schedule a little bit. So next year, you know, we'll certainly have a cost again for GIS, and then whoever takes over for Marcus. At some point in time, we'll probably be taking a look at an employee to the GIS system. And as far as Marcus is concerned, outstanding job this summer. You know, he came in, a little bit of supervision for Paul, Paul came back and talked to him and kind of filled him in on what we're doing, and then Marcus just kind of took off and really did an outstanding job this year, as you can see from that stuff. That's going to be awesome to be able to have that information so that we can click on it eventually and pull up building permits. When was the last time we flushed a hydrant? You know, what's the flows on those hydrants, et cetera, et cetera? That'll all be a click away supposedly. So that's the goal. We're getting there.
Most of the hydrant information is already in there. Like, I didn't show you the utility map, that has a lot of data in it already, too. Are you saying you want to get rid of me already next summer?
You're welcome to come back.
Yeah.
So one of the questions I guess I would have is, as we're looking at, you know, doing these construction projects that necessarily aren't related to GIS, but a lot of times, I like to see as-built conditions in some of the contractual agreements. Could we be looking at having the contractors do some of this for us as part of their as-built conditions, where basically, we'd have an extra license, or maybe they use their license? I guess I don't understand that part of it, but... So if they put in a new street, and they're construction admin for that, can we have them update our GIS map so that we can, for now? Not that I don't want you coming back next year, you're supposed to talk to Brian about getting a letter of recommendation, but beside the point, I just want to make sure if there's ways we can do that as part of our as-built, just to keep things up to date. And then when we're writing contracts, especially contracts on things like road condition reports and that such thing, one of the output tools that I'd like to see is that information should be dumped into our GIS map, not just a beautiful PDF.
Again, thank you for your work this summer.
Yes, thank you very much.
I'm not kidding about having Brian write you a letter of recommendation if you need me.
All right, discussion on future city hall.
I had asked that this be put on the agenda. We had briefly discussed it during our budget process, and I just wanted to keep it part of the discussion. I know it's probably years away, but I just wanted to keep it up there for discussion if there's next things we should be doing preliminarily, or what we should be doing. That's why I asked that it be on here.
If you remember, at the budget work session, we did talk about possibly including a space needs study in next year's budget, just to determine, that's the starting point, how much space are we going to need, not today. Historically, cities usually, we're only going to build enough offices for today.
Or five years.
Yeah, yeah. How many spaces, how much space are we going to need in the future, 20, 25, 30 years in the future? So if that stays in the budget, we'll start that process next year.
All right. Yes, yes, because, yeah, we've, well, we had that discussion a few years ago when the space on the end of Aspen and Sioux came up for sale, that we looked into it, and yes.
So this will stay part of our agenda with the budget, or on here, or?
We'll include it as the budget discussion. Once, assuming it stays in the budget, probably December, January, we can start talking about, or start talking to architectural firms for proposals to do that study for us.
Paul Sando, 1616 Locust, again. I'm just curious, Brian, does that space assessment also include Parks and Rec and utility department and police?
Well, that'll be, that'll be part of that, the study. You know, we also need to start taking a look at a public workshop, et cetera. As far as what city hall is in city hall, that's open. I mean, that's going to be up in part of that study. We certainly need administration, planning and zoning, police typically is involved with city hall, council chambers, you know, and then whatever else you want to include in that, in that city hall. Do you want to look at a community center? Do you want to look at a chamber? Do you want to look at the historical society with museum space? So it's open at this point in time. That'll be part of that space needs.
So let's just make sure that we put a really good scope of work together on that, because it's going to, it could take a hard left really quick. So I think all those things are really important, especially when we look at trying to co-locate and make our city hall something that's very usable, and maybe a few field trips to other towns might help, too, so.
Okay. All right, very good. Improvements to city hall, parking lots, striping, painting, and tuck pointing.
I had asked that this be put on there too, to consider, you know, what we're going to do with the current facility to, you know, keep it upgraded instead of falling apart.
Since we're probably not going to build a new city hall next year, you know, we fixed the roof here. We definitely have some drainage issues that, back here that we can take a look at with paving the parking lot in some fashion. If you haven't noticed, the back wall of the city hall, we need some tuck pointing. We did some roof repairs last year. So it's going to be an ongoing maintenance issue. The buildings are fairly old. We do have money in the budget. We do that every year as to what we anticipate those projects will be. So you're probably looking at fifty plus thousand a year just in maintenance on these buildings?
Yes.
No, and I appreciate that and I appreciate the striping that was done out front. So thank you.
Discussion on development committee minutes and an appointment to the committee.
So if we can do the appointment first, is that all right? I had one other person reach out to me, John Kupel. He showed up at our last meeting, so I guess I would make a motion that we allow him to be a committee member.
A motion from Parsons, second from Fish, I believe. Kind of had a frog in your throat there. Yeah. I have a motion from Parsons, second from Fish, discussion.
We're ten or so, less than that. I can't see it getting any bigger.
I got seven in attendance at your meeting.
So let me put us at nine. There may be guests from time to time.
All right. That being said, a motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed. All right. Next item, surplus of a canopy in a shed.
Oh, I wanted to just go over.
Excuse, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to cut you off there.
Nope, that's fine. I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention, I had missed the last meeting when this was discussed, but I wanted to bring a few things out to the council. Number one, this group met on June 26th. I had had this idea when I first got on council and I presented to the group what the goal would be, and they were all okay with this, which was to obtain feedback on city of Brandon processes and codes which may be restricting growth. And if we're successful, the city will take the feedback, willing to consider implement changes even if staff may not agree. Everybody on the committee was in agreement. I haven't approached, you know, council or staff with this. But these are items in this committee minutes that everybody felt fairly strongly on. And we had another meeting last week, or two weeks ago. But anyway, the main things that the group wanted, or is asking the city to focus on is will the council take a more of a lead in developing where we want the growth to go versus the developer as it has been in the past. And so that's one question for us to consider. We don't need to come up with the answer tonight. But everybody in this group felt extremely strong about that discussion. The last time we met led to that same discussion. So I think we need to take a hard look that we as a council need to be more proactive in that than maybe as we have been in the past because that's what our current developers are asking. Prior developers didn't need this. They just went ahead and did it. We all know who that was. So that's one big thing I think I hope that the council considers to do. And then the other thing that this group was asking is that the council really embraces residential growth. I know sometimes that gets to be a struggle with maybe enforcement or P and Z or something. The perception is there that the question is, does the city embrace residential growth? So if the perception there, maybe there's something we need to consider as a council. I don't have answers how to change that, but I think it's something that we all need to consider. And then the other things that the group brought up is, has the council discussed at all in the past what type of housing we want? We want more residential. We want more apartments, condos. We all talk about residential or affordable residential homes. That's hard when that's getting up in the mid to upper two hundreds. So do we consider more condos that we want to embrace or things like that? Something to think about that I need, I think we need, as a council, need to be more focused on. And then they asked, is there any type of federal grants that we can look into for infrastructure? I don't know the answer to that, Brian. If there's federal grants that we can get for infrastructure help instead of us borrowing all the money or, I'm not familiar with that grant. Okay. They brought it up as a question. They talked about minimum lotwoods for residential. And then there was a, just an overall concern, and I think this happens in Sioux Falls too, just the overall approval process concerning engineering, how long it takes. The feeling that this group was, some of this takes longer. It's more expensive just because the engineering firms are basically concerned about future liability issues. So that's ongoing. I know that I got a study from the city of Sioux Falls. They did something similar to this back in 2011. They sat down with area contractors, builders, things like that, talked about concerns they had. And then the city wrote down pros and cons to each one of their points. If we can possibly get to that point, that'll take some work on our part, but I would like to be able to do that. So that's the gist of what we talked about at the first meeting. And again, like I said, the second meeting, the discussion led to, again, the city being more proactive on where we want to see growth go. Where we want it to go, east, west, wherever. But they want, they'd like to see the council take a more active approach and maybe even be willing to upfront some of those costs. And then we'd recoup it back through, what is it, Brian, assessments? Things like that? Cost recovery?
Cost recoveries if they're outside of the city limits.
Yep. So they were all in agreement that that would be something they would like to see also. So I think as a council, we need to consider that too.
Yeah. Thank you for your update on that one.
Any questions?
So I guess a couple of things. The growth areas and kind of where we're aiming growth, I think pre-planning is something that we need to be spending a lot of energy on right now. It impacts all of our infrastructure. You know, there's some development going on further on the east side of town and trunk mains to the east side of town are kind of challenging, especially on the sewer side. So yeah, I absolutely agree that that's a good place to spend time and energy, whether that's our city staff or us as a council. When it comes to leading the path of what kind of housing we're looking for, just from past experience, I guess I would shy away from that, mainly because it could potentially put us at risk of trying to run into equal housing laws. And that's something that I'd refer to Lisa on pretty heavily. But I know that in the past, I've run into it where towns really wanted to try and bring in some hundred and fifty to $200,000 homes. Well, if you're pushing that and then all of a sudden you're trying to show, you know, preferential treatment to a certain dollar value or something like that. So just walk cautiously on that. But otherwise, it's exciting to see this work, Chuck. And if you have time to sit down and chat offline, I'd love to spend the time doing that.
I think what they were talking about, Tim, with that residential housing that we wanted is maybe look at our zoning. Do we allow more areas where condos could go, which are affordable versus, you know, what we used to call starter homes that were a hundred, hundred and fifty, you know, those days are done. But condos, maybe is there more room for those? So take a look at that.
Sure.
All right. We have a canopy and a shed and they're separated on the appraisal. What do we think this shed is worth?
These are, these are from the skateboard park.
Yes.
You know, looking at the canopy, I would say that's under $500, the shed. I'm not sure what, you know, sixty square foot garden shed is going for these days.
It's been sitting there for a while.
And it's been there a while. So we don't have, we don't have any buyers on the hook for these. So we're going to advertise anyway. But I would maybe recommend both of them under 500 bucks.
I'm putting the cost of 200 on each one of them.
That's fine.
Okay. This one's going this way. This one goes to you and then comes back. Yeah, please.
Second.
I have a motion from Clark, second from Parsons, to declare both of those surplus. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right, very good.
So just a question, Brian, if we don't get any takers, how long do we have to wait until Devin gets to have a campfire?
Whenever he brings the marshmallows.
Golf course is doing their deal. So if you, yes, please.
Okay. Anything else, administration? All right, excellent. Moving on to the streets. We have the maintenance work report. And then we have a traffic study for the bluffs.
This is the traffic study that, go ahead, Tom, that SEH performed for us on the Sandstone-Holly intersection. This is Tom from SEH. I'm not going to attempt his last name.
Excuse me, last name was Sir Whitey.
I would have butchered it.
Saw you doing that enough. I should have done that. Tom Sir Whitey with SEH out of St. Paul, Minnesota. And we were contacted by the city. Originally, our staff had done a traffic study in this same area, basically Holly Boulevard in the area of Heritage and Sandstone back in 2009. And that is what led to some changes there. And now being sometime later, was looking for an update for that study. Next slide. So we'd just like to cover the background, existing conditions, future conditions, what we looked at for traffic signal warrants, traffic operations, and ending with some recommendations. The, you know, some of the existing conditions, next slide, are, you know, things that aren't, are very evident to you, being that this is your community. Holly Boulevard is a two-lane road of significance to traffic. It is a 45 mile per hour speed limit. And there's a traffic signal with turn lanes at Heritage and a side street stop sign at Sandstone, which we'll primarily look to address. Next slide. We conducted earlier this year, used video cameras to get traffic counts at both intersections for traffic analysis purposes. The, we focus on the peak hour of traffic, both in the morning and in the afternoon. And that is then used as the basis for analyzing the operations and throughout the day are used to look at whether traffic signals are warranted. Next slide. We also looked at crash data. I guess I would like to give a plug to your police department. I've been doing traffic engineering for forty-some years. And one of the, one of the problems that we typically have when looking at crash data is not very good detail on exactly what happened. But these are without a doubt, the crash reports we got for these two intersections are without a doubt the best I've ever seen. They do a fantastic job and I hope they can maybe spread how they do it or why they do it the way they do to other communities and police forces. The crash data we looked at was for a three-year period, 2015 through 2017. This particular diagram shows the crashes at Sandstone. In that three-year period, there were eight crashes. All of them were rear-end crashes and all of them were westbound. The, you know, and we'll talk more about that. But, you know, as you, one that seems to be of knowledge and concern, as you, as you go that way, there is a sign, a warning sign with LED flashing lights on the border indicating watch for stop traffic, which would be what's happening when you're having a rear-end crashes here. And likely not to be so unexpected, you know, Holly Boulevard within the eastern part of the city is a nice, has a nice two-way center left turn lane. So you don't encounter left turning vehicles in front of you. And now you take off over to this section of town and it's literally, there is a left turn that goes into the, I believe it's a park or trail area. But otherwise, you're cruising along at 45, hopefully not any more than that, until you hit Sandstone and it sort of pops up and there's not a left turn lane there. So something we'll talk more about. Next slide. The crashes that we saw for that same period at Heritage were six crashes. Four were rear-end and one was a right angle. Again, all were westbound. Just to point out, you know, the rear end we saw at Sandstone were not, I guess I would say would not be something you would typically see or look at at a non-controlled intersection. Here at a signal, you would expect rear-end crashes. Signals have a red light, traffic backs up, you get rear-end crashes. It's an expectation you see with signals. The right angle can be very dangerous at a signal. That indicates somebody's running a red light. So that's not a good thing. But what we did then, next slide, is we calculated crash rates, which is the number of crashes per million entering vehicles, and compared them to averages. There's also a critical crash rate, which is looking at intersections throughout an area and trying to reduce the variability of different volumes at different intersections. And what we found in looking at crash rate information borrowed from, we didn't find any statewide to use, but we borrowed from Sioux Falls, that the crash rate at Sandstone is above the critical crash rate indicating, you need to look a little closer here. Something's going on which is not quite normal. The crash rate at Heritage, we've mentioned, you know, there were six there in that period, but that is below the critical rate, not indicative of a safety situation that needs particular attention, at least at this point in time. One thing of note, which was good that came out of the police reports, is that of the two intersections, total 14 crashes, eight involved inattentive driving. And by no means is this unique to Brandon. I mean, this is a problem that's being dealt with all over the place. But I think this just goes to emphasize that it is a real problem. That, and hopefully things we can do that even with that to help that. But sometimes you just don't get away from that. Next slide. We then looked at, we have existing volumes, so forecasting it to the future. We looked at a future year of 2040. We, other studies have been done in this area, the previous study in this particular area and some corridor intersection studies farther to the west. Variety, a couple different forecast percentages were used. Two percent was used in a couple of the studies, a 2% annual growth in traffic volume. And a high-end look was at 4%. In talking with staff, we felt that the 2% was a more realistic look. In fact, 2% growth ends up increasing traffic volumes at these intersections by about 44% in that period of time. So that's fairly significant. In the cases of forecasting growth here, typically if it's a, if your side streets are a developed area, you typically don't forecast more traffic to those areas. You know, outside of when I was a kid and my dad used to make us go for drives just to look at stuff, once homes are developed, traffic is there, you're not going to add traffic to that. But in this case, there is potential for some more development occurs. So we just added, added growth onto both streets just to be conservative, if you will, in looking at how they would be expected to operate in the future. We, we did look at 2% and 4% growth. 4% growth would increase traffic volumes by 88% through this area, which is rather significant. With regard to next slide, we looked specifically at warrants for the installation of a traffic signal at Sandstone. We did find that at the present time, warrants are for the most part established by traffic volume. And look at warranting for eight hours over a day. There's a four-hour warrant, there's a peak hour warrant. day. There's a four-hour warrant. There's a peak hour warrant. Talk a little bit about that.